So we'll be open to the world. Apologies, I will read out the ones that we've received. Councillors Jeanette Chamberlain-Jones, Geraint Lloyd-Williams, Gareth Lloyd-Davis, Lapunap Gwinver, David Williams, Gwyneth Kinsler, and possibly Brian Blakely, he might be able to join us later. If there are any further apologies, please let me know. No, if not, we'll continue. Declarations of interest, can I ask our officer Gary Williams to lead us through this one, please? Thank you, Chair.
Requirement under the Council's Code of Conduct to declare any personal or prejudicial interest in respect of any business to be considered at today's meeting. Such interests should be declared now, or as soon as the councillor affected becomes aware that they have a personal or prejudicial interest in today's business. All members declaring an interest are required to state clearly what the interest is, and to advise whether it's a personal interest or a personal and prejudicial interest as defined in the Code of Conduct. Any member declaring a prejudicial interest is required to leave the chamber for the duration of the business, and can take no part in the proceedings. Members with a personal interest only may take part in the debate and any vote. If a personal or personal and prejudicial interest is declared today that has not previously been disclosed and recorded, the councillor concerned will be required to complete and sign a declaration of interest form, which is available electronically.
Jauchwau.
Thank you very much. If you'll remember that as we go through the meeting, so if you have got anything you wish to draw attention to, please draw my, make a comment and we will record your declaration of interest. A very warm welcome to you all. We've received the apologies, we've done declarations of interest, urgent matters, item three, urgent matters. It's my pleasure to welcome the councillor Alan Hughes from Corwen, which was the seat of the late Hugh Jones, or Hugh Chick, as people used to know him. Very warm welcome to you councillor Alan Hughes.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to say a word?
Just hello to everybody, nice to put faces to names. And look forward to working with you all, so.
Jauchwau.
Thank you very much. Next item, which is a very sad item, which, as you know, the loss through the whole of Britain. I will read this statement. It's with the deepest sadness that we were informed last Friday on the 9th of April about the death of His Royal Highness, the Duke of Edinburgh, Prince Philip. As a county council, we send our deepest condolences to Her Majesty the Queen and members of the royal family. I will also be sending a letter of sympathy to the Duke's private secretary. The flags are flying at half mast at County Hall in Rithin and Russell House in Rill, and they will remain that way until following the ceremony, the royal ceremony, funeral on the 17th of April at Windsor Chapel. A book of condolences has been created on our website to enable residents to leave a message if they wish. If they wish, they can make appointments to use public computers in the libraries and staff can help them to find the condolences form online. We did have preparations in place for people to leave floral tributes, but unfortunately during the pandemic, this will not be possible. I'll read it out in English as well.
Last Friday, the 9th of April, of the death of His Royal Highness, Prince Philip, Duke of Edinburgh. As a county council, we offer our sincerest condolences to Her Majesty the Queen and to the royal family. I will also be writing a letter of condolences to the Duke's private secretary. Flags are flying at half mast at County Hall, Rithin, and at Russell House, Rill. They will remain at half mast until after the royal ceremonial funeral, which will take place at St George's Chapel, Windsor Castle, on the 17th of April this year. A book of condolences has been created on our website, which will allow residents to leave a message should they wish. Members of the public can make an appointment to use a public computer. At a library and staff can help them access the online condolence form if needed. Regents have been put in place to allow members of the public to lay floral tributes. But unfortunately, during the pandemic, this will not be possible.
I now ask you to join me in a minute's silence. As usual, we do stand, so I will stand. Thank you all very much. We'll go on to item four. If we'll go through the minutes. Page seven. Items one to three. We'll take them for accuracy first. Page eight. Continuation of item three. And then item four. And then over to page nine and item five for accuracy. Page 10, item six. Page 11. Seven. Page 12. Item nine on page 13. And the final page, page 14, which has item 10 on it. If we go back to take any matters arising. Page seven, one to three. If you please indicate. Peter, thank you, Peter. You're on mute.
Sorry Chair, I was preempting you, I was on page eight.
That's it, number four, yeah?
Yeah, I'll turn my screen off as well because works better that way. The matters arising, I've been fortunate enough to see a draft copy of the NRW flood investigation report from NRW. I don't believe it's out to the general public yet, and it would be better if it was because it's a very good report. There's also a report from Blackham Beach we're waiting for, who were the design consultants of the original flood defences around St Asif. It would be good if that could come out. If somebody could chase, I'm chasing from this end, if anyone in Dembysia could chase these people to get these reports out to the councils at least, if not the general public, that would be helpful for everybody. Thank you Chair.
Jauchwau, Peter, thank you.
Thank you very much, Peter. Graham Bowles wants to respond. Graham?
Yes, Dale Baradaro. Just to respond to P T S, I had a brief meeting yesterday with Tony Ward and and Wayne Hope about the NRW report. We're chasing them up. And we believe the report is now finalized. So we're waiting for them to confirm that it's actually on their website and is now a public document. And once we've got that confirmation, what we will be doing is sending it to the L W mag, it relates specifically to St Asif and L W area, so we'll be sending it to the relevant low county councillors in that area and the community councillors. And also, of course, we've got some, we've got our own section 19 report that will now follow that, which will have a wider review of flooding. This is about the 20 events of flooding last year, 2020. And then that report, I believe, is finding its way to community scrutiny in July. So there's a little bit of, a little bit of work to be done to get our section 19 report ready, which will go to scrutiny in in July. So hopefully that's helpful. Peter, I see that the lead member councillor Brian Jones might want to come in as well. Thank you Chair, Jauchwau, thank you.
Thank you very much, Graham. Councillor Brian Jones?
Yeah, thank you Chair, and really just to confirm what the corporate director has said there, I've been keeping in touch with the situation. He's exactly right and correct in what he's just stated. And so these reports will be on the table very soon, actually. The February 2020 flood for the L W region, it'd be published on the NRW website as well. So it's all in hand, taken a long time, but we are getting there and there will be positive results from it. Thank you Chair.
Thank you all very much for that.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, thank you everybody, thank you.
Thank you Peter. I'm sure that we look forward to receiving the report before we get the next floods so that we can see what needs to be done. Thank you all very much. We're on page nine of the minutes. So we'll go over to page 10, item six. Any matters arising? Again, do you wish to come in?
If I could, Chair, yes. Yes Chair, on the climate change strategy, which we we all voted in favour on at the last council, just wanted to add a little bit of detail. Further to the last full council meeting, held a meeting with Helen Bourne Evans, the relevant DCC officer. And I had a discussion with Graham Timms, Chair of the Climate Change Group. And we've agreed between us that over the last, the next 12 months of this council, the Climate Change Group will hold three meetings to finish off this council so that we keep in touch with the officers so that we can report back to the members on how the climate change strategy is progressing. And we're also discussing, we may have a full council briefing on climate change for members as well, we're not sure on that. I just wanted to put that in Chair to let members know that the climate change agenda is not going anywhere and we'll keep them in touch. Cheers, thank you Chair.
Thank you very much councillor Brian Jones for that update. Anybody else want to raise anything on that item? No? So we were on item seven on page 11, council tax. Over the page. Item eight, capital plan. And then next page, page 13, item nine. And then item 10 on the final page. Is anybody willing to propose that the minutes are correct?
I'll propose Alan James.
Thank you very much Alan.
I'll second Peter Scott.
And a seconder? Peter Scott, thank you. Everybody in agreement? Is anybody abstaining? And anyone against? No? Okay. Thank you very much for that. So we are now on to item five. When I get my papers in order. Gareth Williams will be presenting this paper. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
This, this report is 12 months late. You'll recall that at this time last year, we were unable to hold a meeting and we postponed the annual general meeting and rolled over the terms of office of the Chair and Vice Chair, who agreed to continue for this year. The traditional approach is that we always try and resolve the arrangements for the forthcoming Chair and Vice Chair at the meeting before the annual general meeting. And the tradition is that the current Vice Chair of Council is elected as Chair of Council for the forthcoming municipal year. And we do the formal process at the annual general meeting in May. What we also do at this meeting is we seek to resolve the position of the Vice Chair for the forthcoming municipal year. Group leaders have been requested to provide nominations for the role of Vice Chair of Council for the coming year. And at the time of writing the report, we had one nomination, which was councillor Christine Marston, who'd been nominated by the Conservative Group. We have since the publication of the report received nomination from the Labour Group of councillor Peter Prendergast for Vice Chair of Council. So the way in which we would proceed Chair is that we would first of all seek a formal nomination for the position of Chair for the forthcoming year. So we would need somebody to formally nominate councillor Alan James and we'd need a seconder for that.
County Conicis, go for that.
Thank you Gary.
A proposer please?
Yes, thank you Gary. I, as leader of the Labour Group, shall I turn my camera off because it's making funny noises? Hang on, let me just turn this off. There we are. Thank you, thank you Chair, yes, I would like to nominate councillor Alan James as the incoming Chair of our county council. I'm not sure whether I need to give a long speech at this moment in time, it's usually saved for the AGM meeting, when it's a more formal meeting. So I will just leave it at that, if I may. Alan, obviously it's late incoming Alan, but I'm sure that all members will be in agreement that this is the time to firm up your nomination. And I'm very happy to move councillor Alan James for the municipal year 2021 to 2022. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much councillor John Butterfield, but seconder, who's seconding?
I'd like to second that Chair.
Harry Mellor, yeah?
Councillor Barry Mellor. Thank you very much. Are there any further nominations? No? So we'll go to the vote. Shall we try the new process? Because only one has been nominated. I would intend that we just ask, we've had the proposal and seconder, and just ask whether there's anybody against. Okay. Is anybody against the councillor Alan James being Chair for 2021 to 2022? No? Excellent. Congratulations Alan. We look forward to the next meeting for you to be put in the chair. Thank you Alan.
Just quickly, thank you everyone, it's been a very difficult couple of years, so it's good to get to, to get to this stage, I think, and let's look forward to the next 12 months, but I'm sure I'll be able to say something at the, I'm sure in next month's AGM, but thank you everybody for your support.
Thank you very much Alan. Thank you very much. Okay, on to the Vice Chair. Yes, Mr Chair, we're going on to election Vice Chair. We need somebody to propose the two who have been nominated and second those two. And then I'll ask Steve to explain the procedure for the voting. Okay, we'll take the first nomination. Who's nominating councillor Christine Marston?
Councillor Martin Holland. Okay. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you want to say a few words?
Yes, if I may, Mr Chairman, because obviously this is a slightly different position to the Chair. But can I also just quickly thank you for holding the fort for a lot longer than you expected? And it has been a difficult time for us all. New ways of, of holding meetings, not always worked as well as we'd like. Sometimes we forget to press the right buttons. But I thank you very much for your efforts and your work over the last two years. It gives me great pleasure actually to propose Christine Marston as Vip to position of Vice Chair of the Council. Christine has been a member of the council since 2017 and has taken an active role on numerous committees, including partnership scrutiny and planning. She is a voice of reason, a good listener, and would make an excellent choice for Vice Chair. Christine cares deeply about the local community. She was brought up near Rithin, educated at Bryn Huvrid School, and now lives at the wine St Asif. She completed her general nurse training at Glanclwyd Hospital before eventually becoming the ward sister on the Stoke Stroke Rehabilitation Unit. Christine has pursued her interest in healthcare on the council. She has sat on the stakeholders reference group for Betsy Cadwallader University Health Board since 2018. Recently, she has been appointed to represent DCC on the Children's Residential Assessment Unit Project Board. Christine values the opportunity to represent Dembysia to improve and scrutinise health provision. Christine was a company director of the North Wales Garden World alongside her late husband Hugh in Kimlo Bay. Christine successfully managed all aspects of the business, including buying products, managing the team, interacting with customers, bookkeeper and bookkeeping. This has highly developed her diplomacy in dealing with customers and staff. Christine enjoys walking, gardening and flower arranging. She is a passionate, she is passionate about the local environment and sits on the area of Outstanding Natural Duty Partnership Committee. Christine considers herself a proud Welsh woman and has lived in Dembysia all her life. She has an appreciation of the culture and understands and speaks a little Welsh. She is passionate about important issues and she's not afraid to voice her opinions, although in this role she will have to curtail those for a while. I believe she has been an asset to the council for the past four years and she just wants to do her best for Dembysia. I do hope that you will consider voting for Christine.
Jauchwau, Martin.
Thank you very much Martin, is there a seconder? Yes, Mr Chairman. Thank you very much. Thank you. It's my great pleasure to second this nomination for Christine Marston as Vice Chair of the County Council for the forthcoming year. Thank you very much, Mr Chair, thank you. So we've got a proposer and seconder there. Do we go on to the next one? So can I ask for whoever is proposing councillor Peter Prendergast, please?
Thank you Chair. I, I will be putting the nomination forward.
Jauchwau, John.
Thank you. And councillors, I would like to move councillor Peter Prendergast as the Vice Chair of the County Council in the next municipal year. He's been a county councillor for over eight years and he is popular with both officers and with the members. He has served as a town councillor for many, many years, giving his time and energy to advise and help all our town councillors and in Frill, and certainly has been a mentor, I'm sure, to many of the county councillors over his Chair year. Pete has been a Chair of the County Council before and feels that he will, it certainly would be in a safe pair of hands to lead as Vice Chair of the County Council. I'll leave it at that Chair at this moment in time, but I would like to move councillor Peter Prendergast to the Vice Chair of the forthcoming council. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much councillor John Butterfield, seconder? Who's seconding, please?
Councillor Bob Murray.
Oh, that's fine.
Bob Murray, thank you Bob. Thank you very much. So we're ready to continue. Are there any further nominations for Vice Chair? No? Right, so we have got two nominations, councillor Christine Marston and councillor Peter Prendergast. We're going to try a new system. So I'm in the hands of the officers, thank you, Mr Chairman.
The normal route by which we would elect Vice Chair is by ballot, and if you were all in the room, we'd be handing you out papers now for you to indicate your choice. We do have a digital alternative which replicates the ballot, so rather than having the normal voting arrangements, we can replicate a ballot by means of the poll function on the Zoom system. And with your permission, Mr Chairman, I'll hand over to Steve Price to explain that, because he's much better versed than I.
Jauchwau, Steve?
Thank you Gary.
Thank you Chair.
Trying to emulate the private nature of the vote, we're going to use Zoom's polls function. It's not something we've used with elected members before. But we have tested it, it, it works, it works well, so hopefully that will come through now. My colleagues, my colleague Steph will shortly start the poll. And what you will see on your screens is the two names of the two candidates. And you will be able to click one name and then there'll be a button, submit button, which will colour up. And you need to press that. Obviously, it goes without saying, only elected members are entitled to vote on this. Everybody on the Zoom poll will see that poll pop up. Us officers will ignore it. And with your permission Chair, we'll give everybody about 30 seconds and then just check that nobody's had any technical problems in submitting their their vote. And shortly after that, Steph will publish the numbers. So what you will see is the numbers and the percentage voting for each candidate. And we'll be able to take it from there. Thank you Chair.
Guy, just of the new question, do you come in?
Can I just ask one question? I take it that there'll be nothing on the screen in the chamber? Or here in the chamber, tell me who's voting, it's just you as officers?
Nature of the poll. So yes, you'll just see the result in terms of numbers.
Thank you very much Steve, I'll leave it to you.
Chair, can I ask a question please?
Yes, Harry?
Is there an option abstaining?
Sorry?
Yes, just don't vote.
A matel?
Yes, just to confirm what Gary said, there isn't an option of registering that you have abstained. You can only vote, you can only actually positively vote, but obviously if you don't wish to take part, then your vote won't be counted, but you can't actually register that you've abstained on this, unfortunately.
Yeah, there's no need.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we've just had about 30 seconds, has anybody had problems submitting their vote? No. Thank you Chair.
Jauchwau.
Thank you very much.
Sorry?
Who's speaking?
Who's speaking?
Errol. Sorry, I can't hear you properly. Sorry, I can't hear that clearly enough. We're not hearing you properly.
Think he might be on the phone, maybe?
He's ordered his tea for tonight. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, but.
It's breaking up badly, Errol.
Meanwhile, can I congratulate Chris Maston on being Vice Chair? Hold on, hold on.
It's not official yet, Andrew.
Well, it's a shout out, Errol.
Errol, do you wish to speak? Because we're not be able to hear you properly.
Well.
Okay, we've tried our best. We'll continue. If I, you can all see the numbers. Seventy nine percent and seven for councillor Peter Prendergast, twenty one percent. So the name that will go forward is Christine Maston, councillor Christine Maston. Congratulations, Christine. Looking forward to the next meeting in May.
Well done.
And I'd just say a few words, Chairman. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you to Chairman and my fellow councillors. I have thoroughly enjoyed the four years since being elected as a county councillor. And at times, it's been a steep learning curve. I look forward to the challenges ahead and I am grateful to you all for your support. Dear me, Kevniogai, dearchmao.
Thank you very much for your support. Thank you, Christine. So we've completed that item now. Thank you all very much for your attention. If anybody wants to contact us, say that they weren't able to vote, then please let us know. Item five. No, sorry, item six now. We're moving on. Apologies, item six. Steve Price or Gary? Myself, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Gary.
All three of these. The the reason for making this report is that we need to update the council's constitution in respect of the operation of remote attendance at meetings. Just a brief bit of background. The law prior to the pandemic was that we were able to hold remote meetings if we wished to, but we didn't have to have any arrangements for the holding of remote meetings. And if we chose to, then at least thirty percent of those attending the meeting would have to be present in a single physical location. And everybody else would have to be able to see and hear everyone else that was attending the meeting. The introduction of emergency regulations during the pandemic has allowed us to run remote meetings through the period of the pandemic. And that changed the law so that there was no requirement to have any specific number of people in a single location. And as a minimum standard, we just need to be able to hear each other. We don't need to have to be able to hear and see each other. Those regulations come to an end. They expire on the 30th of April this year. And the Welsh Government's Local Government and Election Wales Act 2021, which was enacted earlier this year, provides at section forty seven that local authorities have to have arrangements that will allow members to attend meetings remotely. And so our constitution needs to be updated to reflect that now that that's a permanent change. The requirement is that any member must be able to attend remotely. And for meetings which are not broadcast to the public, the minimum requirement is that everybody attending the meeting is able to speak to and be heard by others present. And in the case of meetings which are required by law to be broadcast, then participants must be able to speak and be seen and hear and see others who are attending the meeting. So recommendation three point one seeks to insert a new section four point one seven into the constitution, which makes clear what those arrangements are. The other changes that are required to the constitution as a result of the Act, there will be many, but but the others that are required to be made before the first of May relate to the Corporate Governance and Audit Committee. So the provisions of the 2021 Act require that we have a governance and audit committee. So we're suggesting that we just change the name of the 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 committee to drop the word corporate so that it reflects the name of the committee in the Act. And then you'll see it, recommendation three point three, that I'm seeking authority to amend the wording of the terms of reference of the Corporate Governance and Audit Committee to reflect some changes that are being made by the Act. So from the first of May this year, the committee will have additional functions to those which it was required to have by law previously. And they include a function of considering the extent to which the authority is handling complaints effectively and to be able to make reports and recommendations in respect of the way in which complaints are handled. And also in respect of the new performance regime introduced by the Act. The Governance and Audit Committee has a role. So in brief, the new arrangements are that in every year, the council must conduct a self-assessment of its performance. And once in every council term, must conduct a panel or peer assessment of its performance. Each of those assessments will produce a draft report. And the committee has a specific role in the legislation in reviewing that draft report and being able to make recommendations in respect of it. So what I'm seeking there is authority to amend the wording of the constitution insofar as the terms of reference are concerned, to reflect those legislative changes. Now, ordinarily, we would take a report like this to the Corporate Governance and Audit Committee before bringing it to council, but because the time scales and the nature of the change, we needed to bring it to straight to council. I have spoken to the Chair of the committee to explain that. And what I've undertaken to do is to take a report to the committee, setting out the amended terms of reference, just in order that they can be clear in respect of what they are. So that, hopefully in brief, Chair, is the purpose of this report.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Thank you very much, Gary. I think that councillor Emrys Wynn has raised his hand. Councillor Emrys Wynn.
Thank you, Chair. I think you can hear me. I've only got one question. There are some people who choose to show their faces and there's a putting their cameras off. Usually there are technical reasons for that due to the lack of broadband signal or wifi signal. But it can be a matter of choice as well. What would be the situation if there's a problem arising where we aren't able to get the voice or the visuals working correctly? Thank you, Emrys. The legislation makes us make arrangements to make sure that we can hold meetings where everybody is able to speak and see and hear everybody else. Technical issues which arise during a meeting would not make the business of the meeting unlawful in any way. In English, they're saying any defect does not invalidate the proceedings. So the purpose is that we have the arrangements in place and that the majority are able to see, hear and speak. So I don't think there'll be any reason for us to not continue with the arrangements that we intend to make. Is that okay, Emrys? Thank you very much. And thank you for the response as well, Gary. That's a great help to us as we move forward. Because this will be the procedure for a while. Unless there's anybody else, can I ask for somebody to propose the recommendation in item three? I'll propose that, Mark.
Martin Holland, second.
Will do.
Martin Holland. Who else? Who's the seconder?
I'll second the Chair.
Or the leader, sorry. I didn't see the leader. My screen's too small. Apologies, him. If anybody is against, please show. Or anybody who wishes to abstain. No? Okay, so I'll take it that's been passed, Gary. Thank you all very much for that. Now, item seven. And Gary presenting this one. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This report relates to the appointment of an electoral registration officer and returning officer for local government elections in Derbyshire. Briefly, the law requires, you'll see in the report at sections four point one and four point two, the representation of the People Act nineteen eighty three requires that section eight, that we appoint an officer of the council to be the electoral registration officer for the area. And section thirty five requires that we appoint an officer to be the returning officer for local government elections for the area. It's common practice in most authorities that the electoral registration officer and the returning officer are the same person. And in Derbyshire, the practice has been to appoint the person who is chief executive to hold both posts. Given that currently there's a vacancy in the position of chief executive, it's necessary to appoint a senior officer of the council to hold both positions until the appointment of a new chief executive. As you're aware, we have elections due next month. The elections to the Senedd and for the Police and Crime Commissioner. And you'll see sections four point five and four point six of the report, the legislative basis upon which the person who is the returning officer for local government elections is also the returning officer for this area for those elections. Given that the chief executive role is being covered at the moment by the two corporate directors, Nicola Stubbins and Graham Bowes. It's been proposed and agreed by them that be proposed that Nicola Stubbins be appointed to the roles of electoral registration officer and returning officer. There is also an election team below that and deputy returning officers who include Gareth Evans, Steve Price and myself. Happy to answer any questions, Chair.
Yeah, well, in your question.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Please raise your hand. I think it's fairly clear due to the situation we're in. No questions? All right. Somebody to propose, please. I will.
I'm happy to propose.
Yeah, happy to. Yeah, me too.
Happy to second if you need one.
Here we are. On second, there's so many of you willing to do so. Thank you, Julian. Anybody against? Anybody wishing to abstain? Andrew?
Yeah, Andrew, be happy day.
Andrew. Councillor Andrew Thomas.
I voted against.
Thank you. No one else? Thank you, Andrew. One against. Everybody else in favour? Thank you very much. Item eight. The County Council Forward Work Programme. So can I ask Gary Williams to lead us through this one? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, as you'll see on the eighteenth of May, it's the annual meeting of council. And we will be doing the formal arrangements for the election of Chair and Vice Chair of of council as per the arrangements that have been agreed this morning. There's also due the annual report of scrutiny, the annual report of political balance and the pay policy for twenty twenty one, twenty two. The Real Living Wage Accreditation Report. We may not be able to bring in May, given that a part of the rationale behind that report was taking into account the national pay negotiations in respect of the local government pay situation. Those negotiations have been suspended because of the pre-election period and won't resume until after the election. So it's unlikely that we will have sufficient information to be bring bring that report, but we will keep it in the Forward Work Programme so that we can bring it as soon as we're able.
Then I need it. In your question.
Any questions on that? I've got a question, but I'll wait to see if any of the members have a question.
Hello, Chair.
Councillor Andrew Thomas.
Yeah, just a brief question. Should the Sorry, can you hear me okay? Should the Standards Committee should the Standards Committee be reporting at this meeting?
I, yes, very well spotted, the deliberate mistake. The, yes, the annual report of the Standards Committee will be coming on the eighteenth of May as well. I do apologize. It should be in the Forward Work Programme.
Ah, that's how I am.
Excellent. Thank you, Andrew. Well spotted. Anyone else? I was going to ask with what's down, but no date by it. Bloods investigation. Will that come fairly soon? We have heard earlier this morning that it should. We've heard about it from Graham Bowes and Alan. The reason why it's down as a future item is that we intend to bring the report to council as soon as possible, as soon as all the information is available. And as you've heard from councillor Brian Jones and Graham Bowes, we're just awaiting all the information. Excellent. Thank you very much for that explanation. Anyone else? If not, can I have somebody to propose that we accept the Forward Work Programme? Alan James. Thank you, Alan. Seconda?
I'll do it.
Councillor Cheryl Williams. Thank you, Cheryl. Is there anybody against? Please show. And anybody who wants to abstain? It looks as if we're all in agreement on that one. Thank you very much for that. And no further items. So can I please thank you very much for your patience? Especially with the secret ballot. It did work excellent. So thank you very much to Steve and everybody else who made those arrangements. And for you for being so good as members. It is very different chairing a meeting under this current procedure, but thank you very much for your total cooperation. Please take care, stay safe and we'll see you at the next meeting. Thank you very much. Bye.